I call this meeting to order. And we recognize the open meeting and location of the poster. The open meeting act is right over there. If everybody's been able to sign in, we have a sign-in sheet back there. Also, if you have any cell phones, if you can please turn those to vibrate or so that it doesn't interrupt the meeting, I'd appreciate it. Let's go ahead and do our roll call.
None.
Yes.
Ochsner, yes.
Yes.
Dilmeyer, yes.
Donovan, yes.
Yes.
Feinschmidt, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, declaration of legal meeting moved that need a motion that this regular meeting of October 10th, 2011 be declared a legal meeting. Move it. Ledger, Jim. Comments? Roll call.
Jacobson, yes. Shokov, yes. Ochsner, yes. Dilmeyer, yes. Donovan, yes. Feinschmidt, yes. Lightwine, yes. None.
Yes.
Moley.
Yes. Nobody absent, that's very nice. Let's go into then our number five, public comments. Do you have anybody from the public that would like to bring anything up? If not, we'll go ahead and then go into number six, reports from administration. We'll start off with Mr. Rose, if you would please, sir.
Well, instead of going ahead and talking about really anything that's on my report that I gave to you, I'd rather talk about what happened last week for us at the high school. A tremendous week as far as activities was concerned. Not only was our volleyball team very successful, our softball team made it to state again. Across country, we ended up second in the conference in the girls and had a girl champion. Football got their first win and performed very well and received an award the other day. But probably out of all of that, the school spirit of what our kids displayed at those contests, both as athletes, as people performing, excuse me, was excellent. But our kids in the stands cheering for each other, a lot of good school support. It's been an enjoyable first quarter in a lot of different ways, but the kids have really performed well. Couple other things with students. Maddie falls her outstanding recognition for her academic prowess. Ketcher Gergen was selected student of the month for October. And there's the things with our ACG prep classes, as well as with our parent teachers conferences coming up. Zen cap program is another academic area where kids have the opportunity to pick up some much needed, I guess, career exploration. So, a lot of good things going on in the school building with our kids and it's been a pretty enjoyable first quarter.
Do you have any questions about anything that was in my report? Okay, thank you. Mr. Rose? Mr. Klein, if you would, sir.
I don't have a lot to add, try to be brief. Did include a few notes about our professional development time. Last week on Wednesday, we had, we had two different sessions, one for our P-8 staff, one for our 912 staff. Coated agendas for both of those sessions. My take, both those sessions very productive, time well spent, a lot of positive things came out of those sessions. Again, they were both focusing on technology integration. Other than that, we've brought in some new student council members this year, quite a few of them. We had a small group of returning members, so we have quite a few new members this year, all of them seventh graders. We do have two students this year who are doing the triple E endorsement projects. From what I've seen so far, the proposals look pretty good. I'm a secondary advisor on a couple of them and been pretty impressed by what I've seen so far, so. A lot of compliments there to those two students and the other staff that are going to be working with them. Other than that, fall season has, athletic season has come to an end for the middle school. And just sharing a couple of notes there about, about school improvement. We continue to meet as a large committee once a month. The larger committee has broken up into three smaller committees now. Each assigned the particular sub-goal age group, K-3, 4, 6, and 712. And those subcommittees are meeting outside of our monthly large group meetings to do work, work sessions. The idea being that we'll come back once a month, large group, and report out on the success or the advances we've made so far up to that point. Again, Mark and Jana are on the school improvement committee, so if you have questions, you can ask them, or you can ask me. Anybody wanted to attend any of the meetings, just let me know. I can kind of give you the details on when and where the next meeting's going to be. Any questions on anything? Oh, one last item, I guess I'd just like to add something positive, something light, sad, if you will. This Friday will be Bonnie's last day at the middle school, so I know I've mentioned that a couple of times. She's put in, this was the start of her 20th year here in the building. She's, she's been there a long time, done a lot of great things, and so again, I want to congratulate her on a couple of decades well spent. We're going to miss her. She's been a great, great person to work with, so. Other than that, that's all I have.
Are you doing anything special for her on Friday, coffee, cookies, or anything?
Well, excuse me, every Friday morning, we have a, we have a small assembly at the middle school, and that assembly during that time, our homeroom groups are each going to take the opportunity, we have about 10 different groups, they're each going to take the opportunity to take their turn and present her with a gift, or with some cards, or a reading, or a letter, or something like that. We will have, we will have some treats and food and those types of things available. And I'm going to present her with a plaque on behalf of the middle school, student staff, parents, president, former, so.
What time does that start?
Uh, we, give or take, right around 8:25 every morning.
Okay.
And that'd be Friday morning.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Klein.
You bet.
Ms. Rayburn, if you would please, will you?
Not much to add to my, my report, other than I, an extension of Mr. Klein's. The K-3 subcommittee has met twice now, and so just a moment to acknowledge the committees, the citizenship committee was in my, was in my notes for meeting and outlining a calendar of character traits to emphasize, and so appreciation of the staff for that additional time and effort that they give, so. My role with our part of the school improvement committee work, Mr. Klein. Any questions about the rest of my report?
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore, Val, can you answer?
Yeah. Couple things. I want to publicly thank Val Popper. Val kind of organized the Pink Out that was hosted last week in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Week, and we, at the volleyball game, the girls wore pink, and a lot of the crowd wore pink, and they had some money raisers, auction, and bake sale, and a lot of things, and she did a great, great job. And she's not a member of our school, but she worked from the outside and worked closely with us and did a terrific job, and we thank her for everything that she did. Right now, currently, I'm working on the annual report. We're required every year to do an annual report from the previous year, and I've got just about everything done, but waiting on the audit, and we should get the audit back. Sometimes we have it back by this meeting, but we'll certainly have it back by the November meeting. Or we better have, it's due November 1st to the Department of Ed, so hopefully the auditor gets it back to us, so. The building grounds committee, we'll be meeting probably next month. Normally, we meet in October prior to the meeting, but with our late start in the football game, we haven't done that yet, so I haven't forgot about you, Mark, and Randy, and Jim, but we'll meet in November and go over projects for the current budget year that we think we'll, we'll recommend to the board needs to be done out of, out of building fund. We have some guests tonight that I'll introduce, and when we get to action items, G and H, if you've got any questions, these people are here. The architect that the selection committee is recommending to you as to be our architect for our facilities project is the Clark Anderson Partners, and Bob Everett is here. And Bob, would you introduce the other two gentlemen, just so I get a...
Yeah, my name is Bob Everett. I'm a principal and a marketing director for the firm. This is Tim Rip, to my right. Tim is an architect and would be a project manager for the project. And TJ Shermer, sitting here, is a senior principal in our firm and director of engineering and will be principal in charge.
So, when we get to action item G, if you've got any questions, I know they would love to answer anything that you might want to ask them, so. And with item H, fiscal agent, we also talked in our architect selection committee about Emeritus, and Emeritus has worked with our school district over a long period of time, and Jay Spearman is here from the Emeritus group, and when we get to that part, if you've got any questions for Jay, you can ask Jay questions also, okay? Jay was a Sutton must-pang, and we try not to hold that against him here when we do that. Just remember all the times you beat him. So, great to have, great to have all of you here this evening. And Sean, I think that will do it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. We'll move on to our action items. First one is A with minutes, that the board approved the minutes of September 14, 2011 regular board of education meeting. Need a motion. Morgan? Randy? Comments?
Yeah, I just have a couple. I think, we've always part of that, those minutes, a couple corrections that we've got to change. Didn't you mention, Mark, some kind of...
Yeah, I'll bring that up when we come back.
Yeah. We might, I don't know if I have closed, enclosed the amended, amended, whether the amended goal or not, but underwriting down. I wasn't sure they were written down in the copy of the minutes, but...
I don't remember what you said, Mark.
Goals is amended.
Yeah, yearly visitation at each facility?
Right.
Okay. Then the other one was...
And that one's under which one?
Under goal.
One.
One.
Year of visit.
And the second one, instead of the superintendent community, who's two times a week, or two times a month, I think we talked about Friday, who's a Friday letter, or in this case, Friday email, I think, every Friday.
I think what we agreed to, that would be two or three times each month. It can't always be a Friday, because I'm not, I may not be there on Friday.
Well, then, Thursday, I mean, you talked about weekly, but I know that...
Weekly is fine, yeah, I think, but I don't think we specify the day.
Yeah, there's flexibility, you know, like when there's an accident or something on Tuesday, you're going to let everybody know, and perhaps that week, they're not there about that. Yeah. I know we did talk about weekly.
Is that it? Roger? Do you have?
No, that's, that's it.
Okay.
Those two items, thank you.
Is anybody else having any other input? Okay, we put that in the, the amended in there, and let's do a roll call then.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Feinschmidt?
Yes.
Dilmeyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Serkis?
None. Yes.
Ochsner, yes. Shokov?
Yes.
Moley?
Yes. It's been moved that the board approves the minutes of September 14, 2011, regular board of education meeting, and with those amendments, we'll put on the goals. Okay, action item B, financial report. Need a motion that the board approve the financial report as presented. Jim? Second. Mark? Comments? Roll call.
Donovan?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Feinschmidt?
Yes.
None?
Yes.
Ochsner, yes. Shokov?
Yes.
Dilmeyer?
Yes.
Moley?
Yes. It's been moved that the board approves the financial reports as presented. Action item C, general fund claims, that the board approved the general fund claims in the amount of $113,731.63. Need a motion?
Second.
Jana? Second. Randy? Comments?
I have two questions, and I apologize for not calling earlier, you would have invited that to it. Higher Life Solutions, what do they do for us?
Drug tests are busters.
Okay, and Evan Lee with an $800 charge, what was that for?
What was that at?
It's under services.
How do you spell it?
L-E-B.
Oh. I don't know.
I'll call someone.
Any comments, questions? Okay. Vote?
Shokov?
Yes.
Feinschmidt?
Yes.
Jacobson, yes. Lightwine?
Yes.
None?
Yes.
Ochsner, yes. Dilmeyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Moley?
Yes. The motion for the general funds, that the board approves the general fund claims in amount of $113,731.63 has been passed. Let's go on to the D, which is repayment of tax overpayment, that the board approved the repayment of $5,283.95 to Black Hills, Nebraska Gas for overpayment of taxes. Need a motion?
Second.
Yeah, second. Questions?
That's, and that's my error. They sent me that 2009 one in August 15th, and then when I got the 2010 one, it was the day of the board meeting, September 13th, I just thought they had the amount wrong on the first letter they sent me, but it was actually, one was a 2009 certified value and the other was 2010. So, we, we approved the 2010 one last month for $7,854.68, and we need to do the 2009 one.
This will be the last one.
Well, I guess it will, unless we get another...
So, it's on the L-H, my opinion, it's a pretty good deal.
I didn't feel too bad. Paul Sheffield did the exact same thing, and significantly did one and not the other, so, right, extra millions.
Okay, any questions, other comments? If not, let's do a roll call.
Dilmeyer?
Yes.
None?
Yes.
Feinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Ochsner, yes. Shokov?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Jacobson, yes.
Yes.
Moley?
Yes. Board approves that the board, the repayment of $5,283.95 to Black Hills, Nebraska Gas for overpayment of taxes has been passed. Let's go on to E, board policy number 5100, that the board adopt the policy number 5100, student attendance as presented. Need a motion?
Second.
Over there, Jenny? Questions, comments? Okay, roll call.
None?
Yes.
Shokov?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Ochsner, yes. Dilmeyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Feinschmidt?
Yes.
None?
Yes.
Ochsner, yes. Dilmeyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Jacobson, yes.
Yes.
Moley?
Yes. It's been passed that the board adopt the board policy 5100 for student attendance as presented. Okay, we are now on to a letter F, premium holiday agreement. Need a motion that the board approve the premium holiday agreement as presented. Second. Okay. Motion second. Questions?
Yeah, I just, I guess I was confused on this. I wasn't, I was thinking on this, but I talked to Sean, he assured me this was a good deal for everybody involved, so, all of this, little questions. Good compliment. Like, it's not everything the teachers wanted, but not everything the board wanted, so...
Could you explain what?
What happened with everything with it?
Yeah, what is it and what's going on?
Nobody knows.
No.
That 60, what was it, 63?
66, something? 66,765.
With that, what we did was, exactly what we've put in there with...
But what is it?
Is us giving them 75 percent, the teachers 75 percent of it.
Okay, but the 66,000, where is that coming?
That is overpayment from Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
It's, Blue Cross and Blue Shield's reserves were too high this year, and so for every school that will agree, they will not, you don't have to pay your December Blue Cross bill.
So, it's not that we're giving them back?
That 66,000 would be what we would be paying to Blue Cross in December for our, our insurance.
Okay.
They're giving every school district that signs off, that comes up with an agreement with how to use the money with their local bargaining teachers group. If you sign that agreement by November 1st, they're, they're doing that, so...
So, this would have been basically our payment to Blue Cross and Blue Shield?
Yeah, we had estimated that 63,000, because that's what we paid last year, but there's a four-tier Blue Cross plan, and if kids, people have babies over the summer, and you know, things change, so this is the, Lind wrote down exactly what we paid them in September, and that was 66,765, and that's what we should pay them in December, but if we, if we come up with this agreement and sign it, then we don't have to pay Blue Cross in December the 66,000.
Okay.
It'll be used for what the finance committee worked out with the teachers by those steps right there, so...
Okay, so then the portion that goes to the teachers basically is paying their insurance, right, because $569?
No, this is just money being given to them.
Cash.
Cash. Well, it'll be taken out, you'll take out FICA, you know, social security, but there will be no retirement taken out of it, but it's just a check to all the employees.
So, we're still paying the insurance, and we're giving them cash back?
We're not paying the insurance in December.
It's an insurance holiday.
The 66,000 would be what we would pay to insurance, and we're not paying it, we're instead divvying it out this way.
Okay, sounds a little screwy, but...
I don't know if it's, if that's the right term, but it's, it's something that Blue Cross kind of dumped in every school district's plate. Don't, don't know their reasoning for it. They had to reduce their reserves, so they said, here's how we're going to do it. There's an EHDA board that comes up with all of this, and there's, there's part of the NSCA sits on this board, and this is the way that the agreement was made, that you get the payment holiday if the board and the teachers can come to a compromise. There are districts that the, the board kept everything and the teachers got nothing. There are districts where the teachers got everything and the board got nothing. This is somewhere in the middle of that, I guess.
So, if we would, if it doesn't get agreed upon, you end up paying...
You paid the 66,000 to Blue Cross.
That's what I thought.
And did we have to vote on this before November 1st? Was that the date? Well, November 1st is the date that Blue Cross has to have the signed agreement. I signed the agreement a long time ago, thinking that why wouldn't the board want to not pay Blue Cross 66,000? So, we've been waiting on the teachers association to sign, and they're waiting on this to be approved, or some, something to be approved by the board, so...
I think I asked you this once before, but were you ever in contact with Blue Cross as to why the teachers had to sign off on...
It was, it was the decision of that EHDA board, Educators Health Alliance Board.
But that, that came from Blue Cross that they had to sign off? It wasn't, you know...
It came from that Educators Health Alliance Board, yes.
That decision, so, Blue Cross would have...
It's, it's not anything we would have ever asked for, it just, it was dumped in our plate, it was dumped in everybody's plate. And so, if we want to not pay Blue Cross 66,000, we have to come up with some kind of an agreement, and this, this is the agreement the finance committee came up with, I wasn't there, so the finance committee worked it out with the teachers association, so...
And then if I understand, that there's $14,888 of that 66,000 left over is what's written down here, and that's going to be put into a fund for grants, is that the way I read that?
For continuing education grants over the next, during the next...
I think that's probably, they'll get used to the money.
The next two summers.
Basically, I agree that, no, it's coming back to school.
That's correct. Go ahead.
For the teachers?
Yeah, it's more than just teachers, it's all employees.
And don't you think they want the teachers to sign off on it, because, I mean, logistically, I guess that's part of their salary package, is their insurance, so I guess that's...
But there's still, that didn't change it any... I just think it's very odd that Blue Cross would, I'm sure they have a reason. I can guess as to why, but I mean, it's...
They, they, Blue Cross has made the effort to explain it to a lot of us superintendents, but it's...
Well, that's why I was asking if it was a really...
It was their, it was their way of relinquishing their cash reserve.
I guess, I guess the way I look at it, it's not going to cost us any money.
Wouldn't lowering premiums be a better way?
Well, that's kind of what I'm thinking, why don't we put it in a pot and lower the premiums for the next year?
It was just the way it is.
Yeah. I know what you're saying, right?
I'd love to be in that position.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call.
Ochsner, yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
None?
Yes.
Shokov?
Dilmeyer?
Yes. Jacobson, yes.
Yes.
Feinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Moley?
Yes. Motion's been approved that the board approve the premium holiday agreement as presented. Okay, let's go on to G. This is architect selection. Need a motion that the board approve the selection of Clark Anderson Partners as the, the architect for the future of the facilities project. Need a motion?
Second.
Jana? Second. Dennis?
Okay, so I invited these guys here, I don't want them to get off scot-free without any questions during this discussion, so... We got Bob, we got Tim and TJ. At least a couple of questions for them, so...
Could you review again how you helped the board with the public meetings and stuff?
With the pre-bond issue process? Yeah, we provide several different services during that, during that time. The first is just meeting with you and figuring out the needs. There are really two, two parts to every bond issue. One is what you can afford, what the size of the bond ought to be, and that's where we'd ask for help here. But the other is what you need, or what, what, what your desires are to fill from a facility standpoint. So, we start off, and we can help you with suggestions for committee forming, you know, getting stakeholders involved, not only board subcommittees, but community stakeholders, administration, school staff. Listen to all of the input from, from all those various stakeholders. Come up with a priority list for what needs to be included with the bond issue, and then start generating concepts and ideas, and at the interview, we started to share some of those ideas of, of how we can fit those new facilities or renovated facilities in the, in the boundaries of your school. And we can bring with, with us through that pre-bond work, cost estimating, obviously, as well as plan development, three-dimensional images, and take that into promotional materials that you can use when engaging the community and promoting the bond issue. And we showed some of those at the, at the interview, and some of the things that we've done for other school districts, for Seward and, and for Hastings in passing their bond issues. So, yeah, we can provide a lot of, a lot of support and a lot of, a lot of help during pre-bond services.
Other questions?
What's it going to cost the district for you to do this?
Well, for, for pre-bond services, we do not charge a fee for our time for pre-bond but you can also get that from us and we just bill you our direct, direct cost for that if you, if you need promotional materials like that. A lot of times we'll use a, you know, a printing company in Lincoln, but we can do that a lot of different ways. Since that's actually money just out of our pocket, then, then we do invoice you for that. But other than that, we don't charge for, for pre-bond services. We do that as, you know, we go through a lot of marketing efforts on a lot of different projects, a lot of different runs, and, and this is really no different where, we're, we're in this with you. We're sharing the, the risk, if you will. We're here to, to help you through that because, you know, ultimately that's, that's gonna benefit us as well and, and we think it's more of a partnership that way. There's less of a feeling that we're here just to provide you with a study or with some services that we're gonna get paid for if we win no matter what. We're in this to, to help you out and benefit from it as well.
One of the big things that we talked about was the difference between construction manager and design bid build process. Could you explain that a little bit and how that process works and how do we know which direction we're gonna go and when that decision gets made?
Yes. I guess starting off with design bid build. When a project is designed bid build, we design it and we come up with a set of plans that shows exactly how the building is to be built or the modifications are to take place. Those plans are sent out to, to bidders and those bidders bid directly from those plans and, and generally at that point you take the lowest responsible bidder for that set of plans. That lowest responsible bidder is typically a general contractor who hires subcontractors and they're generally taking the lowest subcontractor bids that they can get, the lowest responsible bidder. So in, in essence, you're, you're getting the, the lowest price out there. Construction manager is, there are several different models, but the model most typically used is you would hire a construction manager typically earlier in the stages of this, even prior to the bond issue. They, they will negotiate a fee, which there's a lot of bases to figure out what an appropriate fee is for a construction manager. Then they work with us through the design process, through the pre-bond process and help with cost estimating. They also help with kind of idea generation and sort of act as a, another set of eyes and ears through that process and through the design process. At the same time, they, when bids are taken, they're taking bids from subcontractors. And a lot of times they will bid as well, but they'll bid against other subcontractors. You might have a construction manager who also does, might want to do the demolition portion of the work. They will put in a bid and you'll get other bids from other demolition contractors. Then what you do is you take the lowest subcontractor bids and you can see all those subcontractor bids. So if there's a good reason to hire, say, an electrical contractor who maybe isn't the lowest bid, but you have a preference to them, you have, you have the ability to see that. So construction manager really gives you, you know, a couple different advantages. One is that you get to see all of those subcontractor bids and you get to see all of the, that's the kind of detail you get. You also get that, that other set of eyes and ears in the process, earlier in the process. Another advantage is that if, if you want to do phased construction, where you want to start a portion of the work while other portions are still being designed, that's easier in a construction manager process. The advantage to the design build, bid build process, I, I guess you would say you're, you're probably guaranteeing yourself the lowest possible bid because they're taking, they're obviously gonna take all the low bids, but you don't have any say in, in those subcontractors. You're gonna take the lowest responsible general contractor bid. So I'm not sure if that-
Some, some school districts have based their selection of the construction manager on the, the rapport they have with either the project manager or even the site superintendent. A lot of the construction manager will bring their entire team to the interview and, I mean, it's what Seward just did. They hired their construction manager based on the feeling that they had or the references that they got more for the site superintendent, the guy that's there every day more than the project manager or the construction company for that matter. So it gives you a little more flexibility upfront. You can pick who you, who you're going to work with.
And that, that site superintendent is, you know, in a lot of districts, is very important because they are who you're gonna see every day during construction and they're the people you're gonna be going to and saying, you know, this isn't going right or, hey, we have a JV football game this afternoon and we need use of that parking lot, use it, whatever it is, you know, that, that report's important. So there are advantages to, to both and we've certainly done numerous projects both ways, but, you know.
And that's a decision we'd want to make very early on because, again, if you're gonna use a CM at risk, they're part of the team from the beginning and, you know, they help you get a good handle on cost. They see it from a different side of the fence and so they provide some value there.
What do you mean by early on? How early, how soon does that decision need to be made?
I would think in the first month or so, right?
Yeah, I mean, if we were, if we were gonna do a construction manager, we may as well start that process here in the, in the earliest ages so they can be evolved through that, that pre-bond process. That's, we, that said, we've seen, CM's brought on later. It's not like if you don't make that decision now that it can't happen, but this way they have a stake, you know, in the, in the pre-bond. If, if they're involved with, with taking part in this and coming up with the cost estimate and helping decide the bond issue, then, then they have a stake in that. I mean, they're, they've, they've given that price early on and, and they're bound in turn to make that work. So they're not coming in after the fact and then going, and then saying, well, you know, maybe, maybe you underestimated your, your, your project.
You're gonna pay them the same amount whether you bring them on next week or after your bond issue either way. Their fee isn't gonna go down.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you very much for just making the recommendation.
Great. So I know you guys did what, Hastings Middle School?
Yes.
And then the Seward?
Seward Middle School?
Middle School. Have you done any smaller ones that are close that somebody could look at?
Uh, yes, just, we did the addition at, at Friend.
Okay.
Jim at Friend, so just down the road.
Okay.
You know, we did an elementary school addition at, at West Hall.
West Hall's a renovation of- In Atkinson.
In Atkinson, so that's not, it's not too close. That would, that would be a ways. As well as numerous projects for, for Lincoln Public Schools.
Yeah.
Including, you know, elementary school renovations, even smaller projects than that, up to large high school renovations and most recently the new elementary school.
We did the Beatty, we did the renovation at Beatty Elementary School, Lincoln High and East High and as TJ said, the new elementary school is being built in Lincoln.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the information. Let's go ahead and do a roll call. Schokow?
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Koshner, yes. Donovan?
Yes.
Jacobson, yes. Pynchman, yes. Bywyne?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes. Motion has passed that the board approve the selection of Clark Anderson Partners as the architect for the future of the facilities project. Let's move on to H. Bond agent selection. Need a motion that the board approve the selection of Meritist as the bond agent for the future facilities.
So.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Jay, do you wanna kind of explain your role?
Yes.
The role of a meritist in the project?
Yes. We typically don't get involved to a whole lot of degree once the architects are working with the school and coming up with the project. We really get involved once you come up with the, with the project. We'll take care of putting together all the paperwork that's necessary for calling the election. We'll work with the election commissioner and make sure that all the necessary documents are printed and printed in timely fashion. We will also then work with the committee along with the architects to make sure that all the voters in the district know exactly what they're voting on. We really see in a lot of the districts, it isn't so much that the project is the problem, it's the fact that they didn't get the information. Now, we could go door to door and knock on everybody's door and talk to everybody thirty-five minutes and inevitably come election day, someone's gonna say, well, I didn't know anything about this. But there's nothing we can do about that. The best job that we can possibly do is make sure that everybody knows exactly what they're voting on when they go into the voting booth. We'll work with the committee as far as timing. We'll put together a timeline, we have a campaign manual, and we'll work with the architects and if you decide with the construction manager, work with them as well to best utilize everybody's time. Typically, we meet just once a week and that's after the, the board has adopted the resolution calling for an election. It usually takes anywhere from six to eight weeks to run a campaign to make sure that all your voters know exactly what they're voting on. Upon a successful election, then we'll put together all the necessary documents for bond issuance. One thing that we've always maintained is that the local district patrons should have the first opportunity to buy the bonds because they're the ones paying the taxes. We'll do that either through a local advertisement in the paper or if you have local brokers that live in the district or if you have brokers that live outside the district but have district patrons as clients, we'll make sure that bonds are available for them the best we can. Another gentleman that was supposed to be here tonight with me is Mark Mumford. He'll probably be here at the next meeting and we'll work together through the whole process from start to finish.
Is it currently a favorable bond market for something like this? What would the school district be looking at for it?
Interest rate wise, it's probably the best it's been in, in quite some time. We obviously had a recent uptick late last week in the bond market on the shorter end of the curve. Interest rates went up anywhere from twenty-five to forty basis points. We are starting to see the, the yield curve flatten. And when I talk about yield curve is when you sell bonds, you can buy different maturities. You can buy a bond that matures in one year or you can buy a bond that matures in twenty years. And obviously, if you're gonna buy the bond that matures in twenty years, you're gonna receive a little bit higher rate of return than if you buy the bond that matures in year one. And so the yield curve typically is kind of like this. What we're seeing is that yield curve is now starting to flatten out where your long, long end interest rates are coming down, which is great if you're borrowing for twenty years. Because that's really where most of you, it's just like a typical home loan where you're paying a whole lot of interest upfront and a little bit of principal. And if we get the long end of that yield curve to come down and flatten out, that'll actually save your district taxpayers a significant amount of money. So it is favorable. Typically, on a twenty-year tax-exempt financing, all-in cost would be right around about three and a half percent or less. Ten years ago, it would be probably about five percent or a little bit higher on a twenty-year bond issue. Thanks, Jay. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen? Let's go to roll, roll call.
Koshner, yes. Schokow?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Pynchman?
Yes.
Bywyne?
Yes.
Yes. The motion has passed that the board approve the selection of Meritist as the bond agent for the future facilities project. Okay.
Do you want to go back to the architects and make a decision next meeting about construction manager?
I, I think the architect selection committee was all in favor of the construction manager method. I think we discussed that. So what I, I, Bob has been working with me to put in together a, how do you say that?
Request for proposal.
Request for proposal that we can send out and then get them in and then the board can look at them. And I, if we make a decision on doing it and getting one onboard by the November board meeting, is that soon enough or should we have a special board meeting ahead of time?
So when is the November date?
I would say it's like the fourteenth of November. It's the second Monday.
I think that would be time, yes. We could get that done.
So, or we can do, have a special meeting ahead of time if you want, but I thought we could do it all at one, all at one time. Cause we'll have some, we'll have some RFPs that the committee can take a look at and if we can get the committee together before then-
They're gonna say things on you because-
Could we also get the information that they presented to the committee, to the rest of the committee so they know what we're talking about?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Maybe just recess for a little minute.
Yes, we can.
Thank you guys for coming. I don't, they don't have to stick around for a policy review.
We'll take a couple of recess folks and-
And you're all brought?
Meeting folks and-
We're gonna say-
Kind of cleared out the room. Cause if you could see the word policy, you'd be in a spot.
I was gonna say-
Our granddaughter.
How did Bill handle it? Okay, where are our discussion items? First one on our discussion item is A, we do more policies numbers twelve to fifteen. I'm sorry, I'm like a-
Anybody need an extra copy? Cause I brought some extras. Do you need some? So I, I guess sometimes with our policy review checklist, people didn't have their name on it, so we're counting on you to remember if you checked this policy to be reviewed and if it was a typo error or if it's just a word changing or whatever. If it's a major change, I think it's something we need to discuss together as a group. I think there's other, we can also get samples from other school districts. And again, I, I wouldn't make any major change to our policy without the attorney reviewing it also. That would be my recommendation. So as we go through, I guess it would be helpful if you remember the reason that it was checked or whatever. So, shall I know if you want me to lead this or you to lead this or how you wanna do it? But we're on to twelve oh five and if somebody can-
There's a title, delegate, delegate.
Right. Delegate, it was a delegate.
It's under number two about allowing superintendent to delegate authority. About the third or fourth line now, fifth line.
You see it right there? Gotcha. That'll be easy.
I always like those.
Anything else in twelve oh five? Okay, one done. Twelve ten, twelve ten has specific functions retained by the board.
I don't know if I marked this or not, I got some notes here. I'll just do my notes under, I don't know how much detail we want to get into these to determine facility needs. It'd be helpful to have a facility report every, every year or every six months or five as far as roof report. I guess this roofing situation always kind of, it's like a thief or bothers me, I guess. Things go south pretty, pretty fast if we don't maintain our roofs and, I don't know if it'd be a good idea to have a, like the state of the roof report or something like that or a track, you know? Same thing when we find out something, it's almost too late, you know?
The conditions at-
Yeah.
At seventy-five percent right now or?
Yeah, and I just like to prevent that somehow, like status, maybe a six-month status or a year, maybe just a yearly status of like for instance, high, high expense items like our track, roof, individual facilities, the old gym, just to kind of, cause you know, like a few years ago, we knew the old gym was deteriorating, okay, then we just kind of forgot about it. Or maybe every year we got a state of the union type report or state of the facility report, most specific whatever you as a board wanted. Maybe that'd be helpful, I think. Yeah, in fact, I think this was the fire that happened.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that, Roger, be a function of the building and grounds committee?
Well, yeah, and they would, they would- Well, yeah, and they would, they would, they would be a function of the committee after your report every year on the condition of something.
Could we add annually after the word "needs"?
Annually, but then, I guess, just thinking for myself, annually's great, but what are we talking about?
How are we gonna determine?
Roof, track, facility, old gym. And I guess I would do that to you guys. But I think it would be quite a good idea to do it annually, and whatever reports we as a board got from Mr. Morell.
But how would I, how would I generate this report? Climb on the roof?
No.
Look, I mean, I don't, I'm not gonna be able to tell you anything about whether the roof needs repaired or not. I mean, are we gonna bring someone in to look every year at it?
Yes, that would be your responsibility.
I mean, right now, when it starts leaking, we fix it, that's, that's really...
And I guess I'm saying, maybe that's too late.
So we were looking at Rogers more of a...
Well, I've been on the roofs before, when, at Fairmont, because that one leaked before they finished building the building. So it's been a problem from day one. And it's the black stuff, or whatever, and then rocks on it, so you can't see anything anyway. So I don't know how you'd inspect that.
The elementary roof, I mean, the only one under...
The only elementary was only one under wood yet. The others, both the high school and the middle school are out of wood. And the less you climb on them, the better you are, because you're not pushing that rock through the material then. This was what they told us.
That's a good point. I guess we usually get a report every year, or every couple of years, yeah, so I'll go back to you again.
Yeah, I think if you, in mind, I can't talk very good, because I got a cold. If you keep it as general as possible like this to determine facility needs, and then if you wanna add annually onto that, I think it's okay. I think it's important to keep it general and not make your policies too specific.
Too specific. You gotta have, in your policy, you gotta have the leeway to have some flexibility. I think the board...
And then we can always go back and point to the superintendent and say, "Look, you were supposed to do this to determine our facility needs." But we don't wanna tell him he has to climb on the roof.
No, no, and I'm not saying that personally, but I'm saying like a roof used to get a report on the roof. You know exactly, this section was done in eighty, you know, thirty-seven, this section was done four years later. We used to know that, and I had no idea it was to, understand the report.
So you're saying after the fact, or do you want somebody to go, like a professional, to go up and see what needs to be, like, sixty percent, or sixty percent of, sixty percent of life is left, or? Are you more tracking after the fact, or like, you know?
Well, just to maybe have Zimba come out every year and, and report to Mr. Morell, you know, what needs, you know, what's her opinion, how's it looking?
He probably, I think Mike Zimba, or he, I think he sold his business now, but I think he comes about every year, because we had a leak about a year ago. So he's, he's repaired at the middle school, I think. And Mr. Klein, did he leave you any information on the life left in the roof, or anything like that?
No, I can't remember right off the top of my head.
I guess that's why I'd like to see it as a report form. I mean, it comes every year now, I've never seen anything the last few years, though.
If I might, I don't know that this is the plan, I know what you're asking for. This is specific board responsibilities. If we wait until we get to thirty-four or five...
Which says?
It's the operations, maintenance, and security of the plant. So we might be able to reject that in that area instead of these years.
Whatever, yeah. I just saw this to determine facility needs. Maybe this isn't the appropriate policy for the, if there's a better one, that's, that's fine.
But we can get a, we can get a report every year. I just, I just, I'm, we'll have to pay for it. And I think you also have to be careful, because sometimes the guy up there on the roof wants business, you know? So I think you gotta find that person that's, that's not trying to drum up business for himself, too. You know? I just don't think it's very easy to determine if that works. Yeah. You can't see it.
But you know, it would be kinda, it would be track, you kinda keep updated on how we're wearing, or what. And I know that downtown gym right now, and they must be like broken glass, or whatever, you know? Just so we keep up on it.
You wanna leave this, leave this right now, and then? Okay, so we'll leave the twelve ten alone now, and we'll go on to, what is the next one?
Thirteen oh five, I believe it is. We do have, we do have on our board calendar the November prior to the election year, a discussion of whether we wanna revert to a six-member board or not. That's on our board calendar, so we will be talking about that next month. If that's the, if that's the reason why somebody checked this, we do discuss that, yeah. Every November prior to an election year, which next year would be an election year, so.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Yeah, I take, I take it back where we had, we start with nine.
So it's on the agenda to make, it's an action item for the next?
It's not an action item, it's a discussion.
So if we decide we wanna do something, we have to make that decision then by December?
Well, we'd have until the next November, or the next May.
Got to file for office in January, February, somewhere in that, so we'd have to, we'd have to decide in, by December. We could have an action item in December.
But you have to pass a resolution to go back to six if you want to, so we'd better have time to have that drawn out.
And also, and I have, I have a file on it, because Kelly Baker's given it to the board numerous times.
Yeah, that one there, Paul Bond, had it already in two thousand and four.
What's it say?
You can read it.
Basically, it has to do with whoever's up for election. For example, if it's a year where we have five board, five numbered members still on the board, and four up for elections, then you would only be filling one of those...
Slots.
One of those slots. So it's best if you'd have people agree not to rerun, or if they do rerun, they're rerunning not as an incumbent, but running for that, for that one spot. And then with the five remaining, okay, this person that gets elected has a four-year term. Two of those five remaining have to agree to be on a four-year term now, instead of being up for election in two more years. So that goes to three and three, so then you got that discussion also. So you'd have to find two people willing to, to add two more years on to their current term, okay? Now, it's the other way around, you can just reverse the numbers a little bit, but it's basically the same way. If you've got four staying on, then you'd be electing two out of five.
I think we might. So I hear we just need to change the names and dates.
I guess I'd like to consider going back to, going to six. I think when we consolidated, you know, Fairmont, we kept it at nine to maintain most board members for each school. It just so happens, I think a year from, year from now, we have three board members going off. So maybe that would be a perfect time to go down to six. And I think that was the intent, you know, years ago, when we start out with nine, keep everybody happy, and eventually go down to six. If we did that, we would change this one, and we'd probably change thirteen ten also, because that talks specifically about four board members from two thousand on, and then five members from two thousand two, and just rotating that on. But I think there's gonna be three. Four members, there'll be four, five.
There's four, there'll be four.
Four for election.
Okay.
So you're tired, you're tired?
No, no, I think, I think there's gonna be three or four.
It sounds four.
It should be four. Okay, that's four.
Because there was five last time, right?
So there'd be one, one option, if we did decide to go to six.
But you think about it, it'll be a discussion item in November, so.
So then can we add thirteen ten? Well, we wanna do that when we do the resolution.
Yeah, we'd have to, we could just do that when the time comes.
Okay.
Thirteen twenty-five. Currently, number one, I think I send a letter to all of that have been elected, inviting them to board meetings. I think I even might send one before the election to anyone that's running and invite them. Then we also offer to pay in December for them to go to the new board member workshop, and I send usually a brochure. And then, three, I offer to meet with anybody that wants to meet with me, to review anything. We have a small pamphlet of policies that I think the board members should know. And so I think we do all of, all of, all of the above.
Would we maybe add, you know, at one time, Jen, and maybe you had mentioned at the last meeting, like a mentorship program? So somebody new coming on is meant to work with somebody that's been on the board for a while? I think that would be very helpful.
That wouldn't have to be policy.
Is that what I was gonna say? It's not a policy, it has to be a, what's the term for it? Because like Dennis said, be broad. Goal?
Goal, yeah. Goal would be good.
I do think it's a good idea, though.
And that roof blocks you right through it, so it wouldn't be too hard to do it.
No.
So we'll make it more of a goal then, and not change the policy at this time? Thirteen thirty-five.
Do you know what our limit is, is it one million, two million, for errors and omissions, or?
Correct. I don't know.
Oh, called.
So we're gonna put on these reviewed this date then? I don't know. Anybody have any, anything they can remember with this?
Well, to move on, thirteen thirty-eight. I know it's not accurate if somebody thinks of something.
You know, what are we on now?
Thirteen thirty-eight.
Oh, okay. I guess I just added, this is from my postal days, I guess, on our code of conduct. It was always, I was always aware of not to conduct personal business using district property. You know, that means phone, secretarial, coffee machines. Like, I can't come into Mr. Morell's office and say, "I wanna use your coffee there." That's just a free.
We can use a copier, but we can use a copier, we charge like a nickel a page or something. It's just a good...
A brief coffee?
Yeah. Anybody have any objections to that?
How would you avoid that, Roger?
It's kinda in there, isn't it, Roger? A personal gain or financial gain of a business when she or she is associated.
Says resources or funds?
Resources or funds for financial gains. I mean, I'm like, we can...
I guess I just get some more specific. Not to conduct personal business using district property. Personal business, district property. For instance, phone, coffee machine, secretarial.
No use of district property for personal, personal business? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, personal, personal business, I guess.
I just don't wanna make them too wordy, but...
Can we just add that at the end?
True.
Is that all right? No use of dis, no use of district property for personal business.
Yeah, I guess you would have to, I like specifics, but I can understand if you don't want specifics. Sometimes it's not good to put a lot of specific things in there. So what do you mean by coffee machine?
Oh, I mean, you can drink coffee up here?
Coffee machine. Did I say coffee machine? Sorry.
I thought you said coffee machine. Well, I think the teachers might not like that.
Yeah.
The students might not like that, teachers don't like coffee.
Everybody okay? Thirteen thirty-eight.
So when we make those small changes, you're gonna let those pass in the turn, or we have to come back and make improvements at the next meeting?
I don't think something like this...
I'm not gonna run something like this by the adjutant.
Okay, so we're just gonna say we review it, and it's okay.
We'll review it, and I'll have, when we, like, when we adopt these, next month or the month after, whenever we do it, I'll, I'll highlight any change that we made in there, just so we're aware, so. This is thirteen forty, conflict of interest.
Can I back up just for a minute? On that nine to six board members, and this is just discussion. There's some great people in Fairmont that sometimes run for election, but they never get in, because there's, there's even now one Marcus up there at Fairmont, it's no big deal. Just throw this out, that we could do at large, except if we do go six, consider at large except one from Fairmont district, or Gil district. Just throw that out.
Even if we stay as a nine, I think that is something that we ought to consider, because right now, we don't have any.
Yeah, that kinda bothers me. Not that these guys, I mean, everybody here is really, I mean, we all support the middle school, we all love the middle school. Just kind of...
Of representation.
Don't you think, you're an old Fairmont guy, I would do that.
We just have to, I can't remember, you gotta set up a district, separate district, then, so only the patrons... To set up a ward, I don't know, but you can, I don't know that you can do it just for one, but maybe you can. I, I, I see what you mean, and I think it's fine, I just wanna be careful. I think we, we're working hard to just consider ourselves Fillmore Central. And we're not, we're not trying to say Geneva, and we're not trying to say Fairmont, and we're just, we're trying to be Fillmore Central. So that would be, that'd be the only thing I'd be really careful of.
I agree with Martin, I agree with Bryce.
It's something we need to talk about.
At least talk about it.
We just have a question.
Because I, right now, and I've gone through mergers, and I tell you, they can be tough. And this, this I think is, must have been a pretty good one, because I don't see people in the stands, you know, counting how many Fairmont kids start, and how many Geneva kids did. And I tell you, I've been there, and that does happen, so I, I think you gotta be really careful. But we have had great Fairmont representation on the board, very, very good. We just happen to not have any right now. And if that, if it's something the board wants to consider, I'm not against it, I'm just saying, I'd like to be careful, because...
Well, then you need to start letting it grow after, it's true.
Yeah, it's a lot more than just Fairmont and you.
It might, yeah. But I, I'm not disagreeing with Roger, it would be nice to have that area represented, that's for sure. I just don't wanna develop that, that, that love either. Thirteen forty's, we're at, conflict of interest. So does anyone remember, was there an error, or something they wanted to emphasize, or?
I put this down just because there seemed to be, when they voted on salaries of staff, or staffing teachers, there was a question brought up during the vote about if someone on the board has a conflict of interest. And from what I read, number five, nobody on this board ever had a conflict of interest.
I would still personally prefer to not vote on it, for appearance, I mean, just perception. But no, it's not a requirement, based on this policy, and based on state law.
I just wanted to bring it out.
So everybody's okay with the policy, is that good?
So was maybe a typo on the top of the next page, or five doesn't have an A, it just goes right to B? Unless that's a different policy.
No, it's a different policy.
I couldn't tell, the rest of thirteen forty, or?
Thirteen, my thirteen forty, on the, on the yellow we got the first time, there was, that's the five.
Okay, so that's part of another policy.
Yeah, unless it's part of another policy.
Yeah, there might be one. Yeah, there might be one.
There's five, five is the bottom, and then just on the back page is the... when it was adopted, it would be...
It might be that there's a policy between thirteen forty and thirteen forty-five that we just got part of it printed off on, so...
Then it does have a number six, though.
Forty-two is a five, A, B, and C, and then a six.
Oh, right.
Forty-two.
Oh, so it just works out.
Yeah, it just happened to be... and they're all on the back page, too, just like...
Yeah. I'll check on that for sure, but I think Jim's right, it's part of thirteen forty-two.
Well, that wasn't brought up. That was the one that was checked. That's part of thirteen forty-two.
Yeah, it is forty-two, because it's... it has five A on the front, then B, C, and D, or B, C, and then sixes. Just happens to work out.
Okay, well, thirteen forty-five, which is how to fill a vacancy on the Board of Education. I think basically it gives you the freedom to pretty much do whatever you want to do.
I was thinking with this one, because at one time, we were talking about the next person up. That was, if you look at the vote from that year.
It can be done that way, but you're not... you don't have to do it that way.
Talking about thirteen forty-five?
Yes.
Yeah.
Be nice if we had a set program that we knew what's going to happen, you know?
Just basically says filled by appointment. I think we've... we've... I think we've done it both ways. I think we've asked the next highest vote getter in the election if they wanted to serve. And I think we've also just opened it up for applications and had people send us a letter. I think we've done it both ways, and those were the ways recommended, I think, by our attorney. But you can also not fill it temporarily, and we've done that before also. I think Bob Webb left with a little bit less than a year left, and we just went without it, because with eight board members, we were going to have plenty to make the forum, and so we went without it for a year, so...
And I think that's set by state statute, however much time, I mean, it can't be very long.
Yeah, yeah.
But it was required of the board.
Right, right. So I don't... I don't... I mean, you can, again, we can take a look at what other districts have if you want to and take a look at it. I don't really know much about it. I know this pretty much just tells you, find a way to do it, you know, so...
Okay, any questions, any comments? Let's move on then.
But we don't have to do them all tonight either. I mean, we could put them off till next month if you want to, but we're plodding away. Fourteen hundred is officers of the board.
I think I was looking at that, just because, again, not that I want to do it, folks. But as a president, is if you want to look at a two-year term instead of a one-year term? Does it state?
I think you have to vote every year, I believe.
I marked fifteen twenty-five, too, because at the bottom of that one, it's got... It's basically the same as the bottom paragraph in... Fifteen twenty-five.
So that's back on the yellow sheets from the first one out?
Isn't it on here, because I think I marked it. Agenda's on the... it's on the second to last page, or third to last page. Since we're talking about fourteen... because to me, it looks like basically the same. So I think you could almost just have that whole paragraph and place the paragraph in bottom of fourteen hundred and take it out of fifteen twenty-five, because almost to me, it looks like it's redundant.
Which paragraph is fifteen twenty-five?
The bottom one, the President of the School Board shall present...
Take it out of there.
I'm saying just take it out of there, because it's almost the same exact thing, a little...
And put it under fourteen hundred.
Yeah, just replace the bottom paragraph with fourteen hundred. Just a thought, because it's basically... it's just redundant.
Slimming it down?
Send our board policy back, I'm sorry.
I'd say leave in fourteen hundred, take it out of fifteen twenty-five.
Take it out of there and put it in fourteen hundred.
We'd have to... we'd have to put it in fourteen hundred, because it's a little different than the last one.
Right, I'm saying take it out of fifteen twenty-five and put it...
That's all right.
Replace it with fourteen hundred.
That makes more sense.
Okay. Add to fourteen hundred.
Sounds good. Any other questions, comments on that one?
Fourteen hundred's okay.
We'll go to fourteen oh-five, election of officers.
Talk about get specific, they do in the last paragraph. Hopefully, we've never used ten balance. I think at one time they did, Geneva did, years and years ago before the consolidation.
Yeah, it took a long time. I don't think it'd happen here. Well, it was six at that time.
Okay. Any other questions now? And move on then to fifteen hundred. That's the meetings. The numbers is emergency meeting.
Should we move on? Fifteen ten.
Pretty happy with Monday. Somebody talked about here a few years ago, another night besides Monday. Anybody have any...
We discussed, I think, at one point that we looked at Wednesday, but that's...
That's the church night.
Yeah.
Sting statue's on her before the third Monday, but it don't... but Dave's not, but...
Fifteen twenty-five, agendas.
I put it... yeah, I put that down because of what we did earlier. I didn't want anybody else to have it.
I would also like to open it just a little bit more. Say preparation, add the words, and distribution of the agenda shall be the responsibility of superintendent. Strike the whole next sentence and go to agendas are normally distributed to board members two or three days. Again, it's kind of redundant, because then it talks about in paragraph one, two, three, four, any board member, staff member, patron may submit items to be considered. They almost conflict each other. The fourth paragraph is more open. At least three days prior to the meeting, of less of emergency nature, superintendent and board president should make final determination as to what items shall be placed on the agenda, except that if the president or any two board members request an item to be placed, it shall be done immediately. I would add the words immediately, because it basically talks about same thing as the first paragraph. It'd be easier change just to deduct that one sentence. And then deduct that last paragraph.
So what on the first paragraph interests?
So the first paragraph, I would say, let's strike. The superintendent shall place items on the agenda if requested by the board president or any two board members, as long as the requests are made in time and fashion.
Strike that, because it's basically already in the third paragraph.
Okay, how is that going to make sure I get my item on the agenda? Is that going to help me keep my item on the agenda? If I have another board member who wants to put something on the agenda?
If the president or any two board members request an item to be placed on the agenda, it shall be done. I would add the words immediately.
I guess as a board member wanting to put something on, I would like something in there that I get to say what's... How that is put in the discussion item. Specifically, how that should be stated in the discussion item, I guess. Can we add that?
What... first of all, what would immediately mean? I mean, if you've got to prepare it, if you've got to prepare it to send it out two or three days ahead of time anyway, is that what it means, that it should be there when you send it out to the board member?
Yes, it's going to be on that agenda and not the next month.
But people also have... can add things to the agenda within 24 hours, right?
Uh-huh, but we've had situations where it was put on not the month it was requested, but the president can make the decision that it goes on the next month. I think if a board member requests it, it should go on that month's meeting.
If it's two boards.
So you didn't have to have immediately, it'd just go on that panel agenda?
Well, that's kind of the spirit of it, but that's not what's happened, so I would like to make sure that that's the case.
I'm not aware of that not happening.
I could give you two examples, but we won't go into that too many.
I don't know, there's never been a time where any two board members requested of me that it did go on the agenda.
I think we tried and it didn't happen. I don't want to talk anymore about it without going to the executive session, but...
Are you talking action items or discussion items?
Discussion items. Because you can't do anything on action until you get something on the discussion item.
That's the way ours is.
Yeah.
I don't have any problem with taking out that second sentence, because it's pretty much covered. The word immediately...
Yeah, I'm not sure I like the word immediately myself.
That's kind of up to whoever's making the judgment on it, I guess, but it shall be... It shall be done prior to the next meeting?
Or for that agenda.
Or for that meeting?
Yeah, that sounds...
Maybe that would be better. It shall be done for that meeting.
So superintendent and board... Superintendent and board president shall make a final determination. Now, does... who contacts who? Like, if Sean is out of town, what happens?
I send usually Sean the agenda by email and say, "How does this look?" or things like that. He'll usually respond back in a couple of hours. Sometimes by phone call, sometimes by email, but whatever, so...
So then if he's out of town, then he delegates someone else that you would send him to? Or you sent you forward it?
I'm guessing he's just hoping I did it right, probably, if he's out of town.
Well, otherwise, it would be like that one round.
Yeah, he did ask me to contact John's agenda one time, yeah.
That's right.
And I did, I believe, so...
Okay, so we're going to start the second sentence and the last paragraph.
And the last paragraph, and then add, "It shall be done for that..."
For that meeting.
For that board... for that next board meeting.
Okay, so we upcoming meeting?
Upcoming meeting. Okay. Eighteen thirty, voting methods. I guess we don't always do the second sen... the third sentence, but the president of the board asking the final vote, we don't do that. We do, don't we? Do we? It's always Sean.
Yeah, it's always the last one.
Okay, I guess we do?
Yeah.
I guess we do.
I'm not asking for a motion, it's...
How do you vote with that? How do you... is it... how do you do that?
Magic.
It just moves the bottom under the top and pushes everybody down.
So we're okay with fifteen thirty?
Yep.
Okay, fifteen forty. I know we don't always follow fifteen forty. And I guess maybe I was one of them that marked this one. Basically, paragraph two. The board is not required by law to allow citizens to speak at each meeting, but at regular meetings, citizens will ordinarily be given the opportunity to present information or express opinions to the board. I would stop it right there and not have on any matter on the agenda. You know, unless you want to keep it that way, because right now, we don't stick to that. People can stand up there and talk. We put a time limit, but they can talk about anything. We don't... we don't tell them it has to be on the agenda, and I wouldn't want to tell... I wouldn't want to stop them and say, "Wait a minute, it's not on the agenda." I mean, it is policy, but I think if they're here to talk, they're here to talk. Let's let them talk, let's limit it, and I don't think we need that particular sentence.
I don't think this talks about that particular issue. And again, it goes back to state law. This talks about when we have an agenda item that we're talking about, whether we allow the public to address that item, if it's on the agenda.
I think that's further down in here, though. I think this paragraph is just something different.
You're talking about the second paragraph?
I'm talking about the second paragraph.
It's underlined on the agenda. They can talk about any item on the agenda. We can't tonight, but speaking on, like, tonight, we've got...
Well, Mark's just saying that we don't...
Just take that off.
Yeah, saying they can talk about anything they want to. We're limiting them. On the agenda or not, we're kind of limiting to them that they have to be on the agenda.
That's kind of the way you interpret it, it's... we're limiting to...
Right.
And that's how Paul Bond wanted it done, only if it was on the agenda item, could they talk.
And, you know, we haven't been following that. I mean, I haven't, the board hasn't, so...
We've opened that up.
We've kind of opened that up, so to me, I think we should take it off and let them...
So you're saying two votes?
...talk about it. On that first sentence of the second paragraph, I would just put a period after, "to the board", and cross off on any matter on the agenda.
Mark that paragraph, that start with number one, citizens. It talks about requesting a change in board policy or action. I guess it'd just be requesting, it wouldn't be...
If they want a change in current board policy or a change in... I would... I would see that as action the board has already taken, like, change in action the board has already taken. Show me that request, you know. And I think it's supposed to be in writing. I don't... I don't really like that number one either. I mean, again, if we're letting people talk about whatever they want to talk about, I'm not sure that was necessary either.
We can't deny them.
No, and I wouldn't deny them, I'm just saying we're already telling them when they can talk about anything they want to, that the public are the...
Well, we can go to state law and look it up online, whether what the statute says. I could do that.
There's, I can tell you there's nothing in the statute about that. I know that, so. Nothing in the statute that limits public, public opinion, whether that was the board, board wants to put on there. You don't have to let citizens speak at every meeting, I know that, but we do, that you don't have to let them speak at every meeting.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. This says that they can speak on an agenda item, but if we take off on the agenda, then we can limit them to speak just to the things that we say.
We say they can speak on.
Any matter.
Any matter. So it doesn't matter whether it's on the agenda or not. I, you know, if we can't agree, then, then let's leave it alone because we've functioned with it. I just think we're not following it. I think it's a policy that we're breaking just about every meeting in the public.
What did you say on any matter whether on the agenda or not?
Most of the public, when they speak, they don't care if it's on the agenda.
They haven't even looked at it.
Voice their opinion. That's why it's always.
Harder to, because it's hard to find the agenda.
I agree with Dave just said.
Wouldn't that be okay if they offered to say whether it's on the agenda or not, would that clarify it?
I'm so.
Believe it or like it is, a lot of them always talk about the agenda items.
See, now that's the, what you're saying, maybe it is one of them, the attorneys, but I'm like both Marks here, I think you take off on the agenda, any matter they can speak on. Because I guarantee you, I mean, any of us that become president, I ain't going to sit there and say, no, you can't not. I'm sorry, I'm not. Not giving a little bear.
It's the last one, so you want to talk about it again next month? Have we got a consensus?
Why don't we talk about it next month and somebody can look it up?
Yeah, I'll look it up and see what.
Look it up and see what you think.
What the other ones all say.
Okay. Can we vote it up or down next month?
Then we'll be, we do have board policies. And we are onto the discussion items, B, superintendent evaluation.
Well, we're, you guys can have the freedom to talk. You want to go in executive session, everybody leave, and then you can just come out and adjourn the meeting when you're done.
I guess I have a kind of point of order here. I don't think we should be doing this. For the board policy, you know, and for whatever board policy, we should definitely follow the board policy.
Roger, didn't we talk about this last month and everybody agreed to do it this way?
Yes, I think we did. I'm going to just read the policy. The performance evaluation form should be prepared by each board member during the month of December. You know, I think.
But I asked, I asked permission for the Board to change the board calendar last month. That's, well, that's, the discussion item was board calendar change. And I asked the Board that I would like to see the calendar changes and that for this one time that you guys talk privately, do a one evaluation, present it to me. I mean, you've been violating board policy already by sending it to Jody. Who gets the right to look at my evaluations?
Yeah, I think you told us to send.
No, not me.
I think this is over reason why you shouldn't do something contrary to policy for legal reasons.
I think policy says that you guys, that we can agree to come up with any method to do my evaluation.
Yeah, I'm not going to be part of the evaluation because the policy clearly states that we do this in December.
Well, I think you asked our permission at the last month's meeting, we said, yeah, let's go ahead and do it.
That's right.
And what happened?
Where is that in the minutes?
So.
Where is that in the minutes?
That's the discussion item. I think it's important for you to do it, and I, all it needs is a motion to go in executive session and a second and a vote, and you guys will have the time to discuss it. I don't think there's any mandate that it has to be done in December.
It says review and discuss change in board calendar.
And I requested the change in board calendar to do it.
I don't think you can just change policy like that.
I'm changing policy. You're still doing my evaluation, you're doing it in a different month. Are there other things that we don't do in a different month?
State statute says we have to do one year, and the state statute does not say which month we have to do it in.
I think knowingly violating a policy is one thing and.
You're not, you're not violating any policy. You're not violating any policy. Roger, go ahead.
I think knowingly violating a policy that's clearly, and you know how legal reasons validations can be. And I think we're opening ourselves up to a lawsuit for one thing.
A suit for me? I want you to do my evaluation.
I didn't say that. Let that record show I did not say that, please. But where's my mouth, please? I think it's no question that we, when we're not sure, not been sure about a policy, we probably not follow them exactly. But that and knowingly violating a policy is two different things. That's just my opinion.
It's not violating a policy. The statute says you got to do my evaluation every year. The fact that the Board on the board calendar says December, I specifically had it last month and asked permission, why don't you bring that up last month? Or why don't you email us last week or the week before so that we can come prepared, Roger, for all your changes that you want to do? Why do you wait thirty days to bring this up? Why do you wait thirty days from the last meeting? We talked about it last meeting, I made the request to the Board, I politely made the request. I think everybody around the table nodded and thought it was a good idea. If you don't like it, why don't you email us the next day or the next week? Why do you talk about it tonight?
Are you upset with me?
Yeah, I am, I am. I am. I don't like the way you do things, Roger.
Okay, gentlemen, right now where we're at with it, do we want to do the evaluation tonight?
Yes, we talked about it last month, changing the calendar, we all agreed to do it in that state statute, because we evaluate new superintendents twice the first year and after that, once each year to follow.
We don't have to have it completed tonight.
No, I, I just think you need to work on it. And then next month, I, what I'd asked was November, then we go into executive session or whatever, and we'll discuss my evaluation. But I don't want, I have rights too. And you sending it every year to Jody to compile so she gets to see my evaluation, that's, that's breaking the law.
But, but.
That's Mark, that's a.
But you'll help me out with this because I, I guess I thought that's what we needed. I mean, I thought we, I always.
That's what Paul Bond did, and that's what everyone's done before.
Okay, all right. Because I guess I didn't even realize.
But I'm, but I'm saying that's not, it's not what I want, and I think that that's something you got to consider.
Absolutely. But if you want to.
I don't think, I certainly didn't know what to do.
I didn't either, I guess I just thought that's.
On our minutes, our minutes don't say that we made a decision.
We had a discussion. It was informal.
I know we discussed it, but it's not in the minutes.
Doesn't have to be voted on, we saw a discussion, you know?
Is it the policy or the calendar since December? Or both?
Policy.
Does it?
You know, you guys probably have it both ways. There have been times that I've said something shouldn't be on the, well, that's what happened. You know, it's what happened, it isn't on the minutes.
So what's the, what's the, what's the problem with doing it tonight? You want me to sign something that says I won't sue you to do my evaluation? I'm glad you didn't want that assigned. What's, what's the problem with doing it tonight? We planned for it, we prepared for it, it's on the agenda. Nobody complained when they got the agenda that it was on there. We talked about it last month, we've had thirty days, and now all of a sudden it's a problem. And, you know, you guys blame me for lack of communication a lot of times. Well, what happened the last thirty days that someone couldn't complain that they didn't like it on the agenda? You know? It's, it's always marked as a communicate, well, look at this communication, terrible.
Well, like I said, gentlemen, we can, and ladies, we can do it tonight, doesn't mean we have to have it finished.
This is the discussion item.
So let's put in the motion, go into executive session to evaluate Mr. Norvell's as a superintendent. I need to have a.
Okay.
So we are now in executive session. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Questions?
Ten fifteen?
I got ten sixteen now.
Ten sixteen. Roll call.
Fine, sir. By Wyman.
Yes.
Donovan.
Yes.
Jacobson. None.
Yes.
Ochsner, yes? Schaffler?
Yes.
And Ali?
Yes. We need to have everyone clear out their wood, please.
Can I just lock it on the outside and push it open? I guess I can get a chance, I'm not sure.